I'd like to call this Planning Commission meeting to order for July 13th, 2021. Please stand to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call. Chair Barbe?
Present.
Commissioner Doan?
Present.
Commissioner Paul?
Present.
Vice Chair Rainey?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez?
Present.
Commissioner Serrato?
Present.
Commissioner Wyler?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the minutes from the 22nd of June, do we have any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? Hearing none, do we have a motion to?
I'll move to approve the minutes of July, or June 22nd.
Commissioner Wyler, and the second by Commissioner Serrato. Thank you.
Chair Barbe? Yes. You vote aye? Aye. Okay, thank you, sorry. Sorry. Commissioner Doan, how do you vote?
Commissioner Paul?
Yes, approve.
Vice Chair Rainey?
Approved.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes, approved.
Thank you. Commissioner Serrato?
Yes, approve.
And Commissioner Wyler?
Yes.
Thank you. The vote is seven to zero, approved, thank you.
Are there written communications this evening?
Yes, there are. There are two pieces that were previously sent to the Planning Commission related to the housing element. One was sent on June 28th and the other was sent on June 30th, both regarding the housing element.
Thank you. Future neighborhood meetings?
Nothing on the agenda, or nothing scheduled.
Nothing scheduled. Oral communications, let's see. This is an opportunity for the public to make any comments they wish of any general nature or specific nature not related to the agenda. Seeing none?
No, there are none.
Okay. Our first public hearing tonight, first and only public hearing, tentative subdivision map and grading exemption, PL 21-0056. So I believe there is a presentation on this.
Correct. Jay Paul, Senior Planner, will be providing that.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner, Jay Paul, Senior Planner. There we go. And on tonight's agenda, item G1, there's two actions requested. It involves a tentative subdivision map for the subdivision of an infill development or infill lot into six single-family residential lots. The project also includes a grading exemption for a fill slope in excess of 10 feet in height. Brief overview of the project here. Here is the infill 2.1 acre residential property. It is zone R110, single-family residential. That 10 stands for minimum 10,000 square foot lot sizes to subdivide the property into. Here you can see the property is vacant and sparsely vegetated. Access is provided off of La Lomita Drive here on the north. La Lomita Drive is a private street and will remain a private street. Surrounding uses are generally single-family residential on all sides, ranging, the zoning ranges from R110 to R16. Across Broadway is Escondido High School. Just a blown-up picture of the site, you can see how it's vegetated, and La Lomita Drive here on the north and a private drive here on the east. These are some street views, looking at the site under its current condition. You can see the current condition of North Broadway includes curb gutter and sidewalk. The project actually will widen North Broadway an additional nine feet in accordance with the general plan circulation element for that street. You can see the condition of La Lomita Drive here, private drive. It will also be widened across the project frontage to include curbs, gutter, and sidewalk. The project involves six single-family residential lots. Here you can see the property and the proposed subdivision. It includes, grading includes a combination of cut and fill slopes. Lot sizes will range approximately 10,000 square feet to 18,000 square feet net lot area, the largest being Lot 6 here. It will include a stormwater basin up in the corner to treat the street water from La Lomita Drive and also the project's runoff. The grading includes a combination of a cut and fill. Here you can see the smaller retaining walls here in red. Fill slopes along North Broadway and along this portion of the site. These will be cut slopes with a retaining wall up to approximately five feet inside. Access will be provided by La Lomita Drive here. Two of the lots will take access off of La Lomita Drive, Lot 1 and Lot 6. The remaining will be provided by a new cul-de-sac street, which will also be a private street. Due to the depth of the cul-de-sac, parking would be limited, if not restricted, along the cul-de-sac. So we've added a condition, and the lots are large enough to, for the applicant or the future developer, to provide at least six cars onsite. And that can be done by a combination of ways, through three cars garages, three in the driveway, four-car garages, two, there's a number of ways to do that. We wanted to ensure that sufficient parking was provided so they don't filter into the adjacent neighborhood and impact adjacent neighbors. However, there will be on-street parking allowed along La Lomita Drive here, and perhaps some limited parking on North Broadway, depending on the final design and site distance as you look left out of the intersection here. Engineer will make that final determination on if parking will be provided. The project includes noise walls, shown in orange here, and that's necessary due to proximity and the traffic noise along North Broadway. The project includes, also includes a grading exemption and a portion of Lot 2 here. Now grading exemptions are required for any fill slope in excess of 10 feet in height. It just requires that staff in the Planning Commission take a closer look to see the appropriateness of that and make sure they don't have an impact to the adjacent neighborhood. In this case, this fill slope will include trees, a variety of trees, and ground cover and shrubs to avoid any visual impacts to the neighbors on the south. The frontage here, the street frontage, and the slopes and the area on the southern side of Lot 6 will be maintained by a homeowners' association along with the public street and the stormwater basin. The project qualifies for categorical exemption in accordance with SEQA for infill development. There are no significant environmental impacts associated with this project. Staff is recommending approval of the tentative map and the grading exemption and that Planning Commission adopt the environmental determination, which is the infill categorical exemption. That concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant is also here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. First, are there any disclosures on the part of commissioners related to this project? No? Okay. Questions for clarification? Commissioner Wyler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Paul. I only had a couple of minor questions. One of them was in regard to the frontage along North Broadway there. So they're not, they're only required to dedicate some extra land but not change any of the improvements that are out there, is that correct?
Actually, the dedication is already there for the additional nine feet. They're actually required by the circulation element to physically widen that street to major road standards. If you look south of that Trellis, the last subdivision there was Trellis Lane, they widened out and had to make transitions to that, so this project will have to do the same.
And will it connect to that transition to the south?
I will show you here, right now, to the south is not widened to its ultimate width.
Further to the south it is.
Further south where the Trellis Lane project. So it will make the transition after the power pole, so they don't impact the power pole, and terminate here at the intersection.
And then the only other question, La Lomita Drive, who maintains that right now? Is that all the homeowners up that street?
Homeowners have to maintain that, they have some type of old agreements.
Oh, they do.
To do that, and they get together. This project will now be, homeowners' association will maintain their frontage.
Got it. Okay, that was it, thank you.
Are there questions from commissioners? Commissioner Paul?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if the applicant had any concerns with any of the conditions that staff imposed.
At this time? Other, any other questions, comments? Commissioner Wyler covered my questions, so is there a motion then?
I would move approval.
Commissioner Paul, motions for approval?
Second.
I will second that.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair Rainey. Vice Chair Rainey, seconds. All right, roll call?
Right, Chair Barbe, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan? Thank you. Commissioner Paul?
Yes, approve.
Vice Chair Rainey?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Serrato?
Yes.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wyler?
Yes.
Thank you. Vote is seven to zero, unanimous approval.
Actually, I'm thinking perhaps there was a public comment on this one?
The applicant filled out a speaker slip just in case.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. All right, moving on, current business. Thank you for coming tonight. Current business, first off, is the green infrastructure plan review. The subcommittee has worked offline a little bit on this and would like to solicit the commission's full feedback on the material we have. I think someone's going to run the PowerPoint for it. Oh, you are? Okay.
Yep, I've asked Darren Parker, he's Associate Planner here with us, I've asked him to take care of that.
Appreciate it. All right. I also just heard, just for everyone's information, that this entire subcommittee may not be able to present to the city council, that it would just be one person, meaning me as Chair, to, sorry, that only one person will be able to present to city council, and that would be next week. But we can talk about that a little bit at the end of this presentation. So, let's see. So our subcommittee met and we sort of reconfigured our interests, we talked with city staff, we talked, one of our subcommittee members actually spoke with community members in the area and solicited some feedback. And so the first, so the first slide I will cover and provide an overview of what we're going to cover in our presentation. I'll talk about a definition and scope, opportunities, alignment, benefits, and other members will also cover funding opportunities, planning process, community engagement, and then we'd open it up for questions and discussion with city council. And what we've done is actually to narrow our scope a fair amount based on conversations with city staff and also with, particularly with the Director of Environmental, the Environmental Department. And based on her observations, probably it would be better to really focus with greening the streetscapes. So we're still interested in having this broad map, mapping process for the entire jurisdiction as opposed to, for green space, but we'll actually focus on green space, open green space, greening the streets, permeable pavement, street tree and shrubs, planting that would, increasing efficiencies across all the different ordinances and actions that are currently underway in the city, and really focus on pocket parks and that sort of thing, but also in, with respect to scope, looking at the broad jurisdiction, but then drilling down into the, as we mentioned before, to the priority investment neighborhoods under the Climate Action Plan, and then also the East Valley Specific Plan, using those two areas as really specific drill-down focus to figure out what exactly it is we can add to those areas. But at the same time, having the broader mapping to understand what the connectivity and access is to green space across the city. So that's sort of where we're focusing our efforts at this time. Go ahead.
Are we moving to the next slide?
Oh, sorry, okay. Sorry, we just did this this morning. So what is green infrastructure? As I mentioned, there are as many definitions as there are people in the room. At the federal level, they often refer to it, and certainly city staff think about green infrastructure with respect to stormwater management and floods. But, so what we're looking to do is to really focus, as I said, on those areas. So I think, the next slide, please, sorry. That's where, and this is the two areas that we would focus on, the urban core and then the East Valley Specific Plan, which is off to, beyond the Palomar site in that area, which we'll also be reviewing tonight. And one of the things that I found particularly interesting in the East Valley Specific Plan was the number of green, greening elements that are included in that plan. It's got a pretty strong vision for park overlay, as well as a number of other aspects that I think will really align well with this effort, in fact, may well inform it and provide an opportunity to be sort of a poster child for greening streets in the city if we can, as we go forward. So, or Nathan, sorry.
So, next slide, challenges. So just some of the challenges that we have right now as a commission is the existing standards, some of them are deficient, conflicting, and outdated. The Grape Day Park Master Plan was last addressed in 2015 but was never formally adopted. You also have the Escondido Creek Trail Master Plan that was, worked on 2012, also never formally adopted. So there's also the parking requirements, open space requirements that are quite unrealistic with the density requirements and the downtown specific plan, so also just some conflicting regulations with the cap. So I know with the LEAP grant, some of these are going to be addressed, which makes it a great opportunity to kind of tie these into some of those new planning projects, including the East Valley Plan and the housing ordinance. So some other challenges right now is the constant exemptions, for instance, the El Mercado Plan, they wanted to do an open space exemption, and the more we keep exempting these open space requirements, we kind of are led to a lost vision of Escondido and what we want for those green spaces. And then overall is just a lack of green spaces and quality of life for Escondido residents. So it's really a challenge on, you know, on our part as leaders, is really exempting these requirements, and then we put the burden on the quality of life for residents, or on the other hand, we put the burden of quality of life on the residents, and then we constrain developers. So on the next slide, there's a really great graph. So this is a study done by the Trust for Public Land, and it measures quality of life in San Diego County. And, ooh, I'm getting nervous up here. So Escondido was rated the lowest in access to parks, so they measure all the cities and who has the largest proportion of people living within a 10-minute walk. And so Del Mar has the highest, around 85%, and then Escondido is the lowest, so only about 38% of residents have a 10-minute access to parks. So they measure quality of life based on access to parks, but also, you know, economics standards and a bunch of different ways, but again, access to green spaces was one of the ones that they measured. So, next slide. So then some of the benefits for having a green infrastructure plan, again, is just improved walkability, use of public transit, and then strategic connection of these green spaces. So we do have a lot of these plans being updated right now, so it's a great opportunity to kind of get a consolidated and streamlined set of those open space requirements throughout all the different plans we're updating, and making sure we're not losing sight of the other areas of opportunity in the urban core. And then again, you know, public investment spurs private investment, so the more we can make development more approachable in Escondido, the more projects we can get. And then, you know, communities will take pride in that with these changes. We, you know, studies show that you have more green spaces in these cities, it also reduces crime. And then really about being efficient and saving money by making sure all these plans make sense together. We do have a lot of plans in the works, but making sure that they make sense in the long run and we're not having to redo plans, you know, every so often, and just making sure they all make sense. And then again, just planning for green space that enables in the higher density requirements that we want in the city.
If I could, real quick, just let you guys know, please do speak into your mics, I believe it's being hard to be picked up at this point. Thank you.
And that's it for my part.
Next slide, please. So one of the things that, you know, we talked about is this, of course, is another plan and we envision it'll follow similar suit like we've, you know, talked about other plans and have seen it come forth. The bigger thing we want to, you know, reiterate, and I think you've heard it from all three of us at this point, and is really leveraging existing resources and efforts and assessing what opportunities we have. So a lot of the initial phases to do mapping and prioritize geographies, and, you know, we already shared some of our thinking in that. And, you know, this shows a circular process, but at any point, we're envisioning that we have opportunities depending on funding and other, you know, city priorities, providing spaces also to engage community, that any of those three things could dictate where we start, where we prioritize, and where, you know, we dedicate more resources at any given time. And, you know, keeping in mind that this is a living plan and that, you know, it has, it's going to be a lens to bring all the other plans that we've mentioned together. So, next slide, please. Some of, of course, the bigger question I think all of us are thinking about is just this incurs some costs, and of course, we did consider that heavily, and we heard that a lot from our meeting with staff and their recommendations. And so we wanted to lay out, and I won't read them all, but you see some of the usual suspects of our, you know, Caltrans, EPA awards that have been, you know, awarded in our region, in our county recently, that we can also take advantage of that. And from a recent communication, private foundations, we can't forget the role that they play in funding green infrastructure projects. And then, of course, with funding come the opportunity to prioritize and leverage resources and be responsive to what funders need that might also be able to help us, you know, get this done. One of the things to note and that I wanted to share with you all, just, I know some of you are aware, but in our work, in the work that I do personally, what, and tying to these kinds of efforts is, a bigger theme is funding, or more funding is dedicated to projects that are community-led and have a bigger community component. And so we hope that, you know, through this and sort of what we laid out in the slide before, that we, you know, called that out and make sure that we were highlighting it as an opportunity. And the Green Infrastructure Plan, for example, is something that's being led by the Planning Commission, which I think funding authorities could see it as a, you know, different type of plan that's being presented to them. Next slide, please. I wanted to give you all some examples of some of our neighbors and where they benefited from and can tie it all in, right? We talked about how green infrastructure can really bring all of these efforts together. Well, our neighbors in Vista just received, or not just, but three years ago and are about to make the built improvements, received $4 million of infrastructure that included the green landscaping to improve walkability and then also included traffic calming measures. And I think that's one of the things that we all talked about in the subcommittee as being a key point in that you, in the city of Escondido, we know that land, for example, is, you know, we're not going to have access, you know, we can't make up, you know, we can't, that doesn't just come up, but we can be creative in terms of how that's used and what we use it for, and bringing back resources to the city like traffic calming features that do involve greenscape. Another, you know, thinking creatively in terms of funding examples, the House just passed a transportation bill and $20 million were secured for the 49th District, and, you know, along, also, a lot of the projects that listed there had this multi-use approach of funding traffic, you know, projects that also included greenscape and connectivity and other benefits for the city. So those are just some examples for you all. Next slide, please. And we wanted to bring forth, not just our voices as the committee working on this, but also make sure that we had community input and just feedback about what the community would like to see. So we collected some quotes from folks in different districts, and Estela is, Estela Chamou lives in District 3. She uses, she's someone that uses active transportation, public transportation pretty regularly, and so her quote is there for you all to read. And, you know, really, I won't read it word by word, but the nexus is if we have it there, if we, you know, bring the resources to the community, it'll promote use of it. And one of the things that she wanted to highlight for me in her conversation was that the bus shelter that you see pictured there, that's her main bus shelter that she uses, it's her first stop, but it isn't covered, and it doesn't provide that shelter from heat, and, I mean, all of us would know that's about to get pretty warm, and so can we use the, this green infrastructure to feed two birds with one seed and provide greener scape in our city, but also provide resources like shading and other, you know, protective measures. Next slide, please. Our second, and this is our last, community input is from Esme Gonzalez, she lives in District 1, she's a mom of a 10-year-old, and her quote is there for you all to read, but kind of the nexus of it, and what I really gleaned from it was that, you know, we can also get creative about what we're using and what we're tapping into. And what she's suggesting here is a mixed-use approach that, you know, is a different kind of conversation, but this picture here is one that she shared, and it's her daughter playing at a playground, but it's farther away, so she has to drive to this park. But right around where she lives, she has her daughter's school, and, you know, she says, "We walk there every afternoon and the playground is empty." And what could it look like if people like me and my daughter had access to that, to the playground, it could be turned into a park after hours. So those are just some of the comments that we got from community members. That's it for my part.
Okay, so the final slide, please, which is simply a tag for questions and discussion, but I would wrap up by saying that there is, in the work plan, that interim director Feinstein would have presented to the city council, he'll go through that before we actually have this presentation, you'll, I'll note that there was an unfunded item for this particular activity, and that we would hope that the city council would go forward with support for this in the coming year, that we would certainly look for external funding, whether through grants or nonprofit organizations, et cetera, but that we would look for their support, the city council's support going forward. Again, and really with an emphasis on the priority investment neighborhoods in the Climate Action Plan as well as the East Valley Specific Plan, and going through a community engagement process to really understand their interests and needs with respect to greening the city streets, et cetera. So then we just open it up. So in lieu of that, of course, for the council, we'd appreciate any input or ideas or comments to either strengthen or whatever. Commissioner Wyler?
Yeah, and I actually kind of have a question more for staff, and this kind of pertains to Commissioner Ramirez, what she got from the public input about using the schools for parkland. Does the city and the school district have any reciprocal agreement that the citizens can use the school grounds to recreate? I mean, I've seen it done because I've seen soccer games and everything going on, and I'm assuming that, I guess, those folks have to pay a fee in order to utilize, but is there something else where at least the playgrounds can be opened and, you know, the kids from right around the neighborhood could actually use the school?
Yeah, I remember when I was a kid, I could just walk right into the open fence, right? Not the same these days, I think, and I know that we would have to enter into certain sorts of agreements with the school district, I don't believe those are in place at this point, so we can explore that. I know that there's a lot of regulatory issues with two agencies of the size and scope entering into certain agreements, but that's something that can be analyzed and explored, definitely.
Thank you, Commissioner Wyler, good comment.
And then as far as looking for funding sources, because, yeah, it'd be nice to have pocket parks all throughout the city, I mean, that'd be great, everybody would love that, but how do you get the, how do you get the land? You know, most people are not going to donate their land, it does happen. So somehow, it seems like, and I don't know who does this... their land. It does happen. So, somehow, it seems like, and, and I don't know who does this, but chases down these grants and spends the effort and the money and the time to go after these grants to purchase the properties in key locations through the city. Because I'm sure there's all sorts of lots out there where it, it may be possible. And, and, you know, quite frankly, it might not be possible just because there's existing homes everywhere, and all of a sudden, you've got these, these areas where there's, where there's just not a park, so to speak, within a ten-minute walk. And, and I'm sure they're out there throughout the city. But I think the city's done a really good job, especially on the regional side, you know, setting aside and, and, or accepting and setting aside Daly Ranch. That's a huge asset. We've got, you know, a couple of reservoirs the people are using to recreate around, K Carson Park. But I understand that, you know, those are regional in nature, and they're great, and they're great facilities. But yeah, it takes people to drive there. Or, or you use your electric bike, you know, which I've actually done, and it was great. But, and it's, it's a heck of a ride to get there.
Right. So, I think the notion is to, to use this process as a way to identify some of those little pocket park areas that might actually be feasible to, to either procure, to either procure or to cut, cut agreements with those who, of those owners to enable pocket parks or, or some sort of greening in here and there. Because as it is right now, as you saw from that, the data, that very, there's not a lot, it's very hard to get to a park area from a lot of points in the center of the city.
Yeah, and, and I was kinda curious on that because I saw the city of Carlsbad, which was at, at the low end. So, I've done a lot of work in the city of Carlsbad for the last thirty years, and their requirements for their plan unit developments, their master plan communities, and then their growth management program, I'm absolutely shocked that they're that low on the spectrum. Because even their open space requirement per growth management requires that forty percent of the city, forty percent be set aside for open space. And, the city's getting close to built out, and they are like at thirty-eight percent. So, even back in the eighties, they set a goal that was super high, and then I'm seeing this where they're, you know, third from the bottom. I don't know, I'm kind of surprised. Because, especially, and I drive around Carlsbad because I got a lot of projects out there, and there's a lot of parks. I mean, they are everywhere. And I don't know if the city of Carlsbad and the, and the Carlsbad School District has reciprocal agreements, but based on the number of parks, I wouldn't see why they would need to. But, you know, I'm, I'm getting off topic, but I was really surprised at, at where Carlsbad was in, in that whole spectrum. So...
Well, we can provide a link to the report, actually, which might provide more insights as to where those data points came from, et cetera, if you're interested. So, other thoughts? Comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, one final comment. Apologize. I'm, I'm, I'm still concerned about, and, you know, I, I, I like what's trying to be accomplished by looking at where we can identify locations throughout the city where it would be good to have, you know, the pocket parks and those sort of things. I'm still of the opinion that we have a lot of ordinance requirements for landscaping. We've got our parks' master plans. We've got specific plans that are really intended to make sure that we don't have these areas where appropriate park facilities aren't being provided. Now, I get it, you know, in some of the older communities, that just wasn't an issue back in, I don't know, the forties, fifties, and sixties, when some of these communities were built. It was just like, straight out, put out the homes, and, I don't know, the kids were supposed to go to the school to recreate. So, those are the areas that are gonna be a little tougher to get any sort of additional recreation facilities. But I'm still of the opinion that as new development comes in, that the requirements are there for them to provide appropriate, an appropriate level of, of recreation space. And I know that we've seen developers coming in as of late, saying, "Look, if, if we are trying to get high density or higher density, there, there's gotta be a break in something." And is it a break in parking? Is it a break in open space? And, and what I'm seeing is, it's a combination of both in order to get the higher density because there's only so much land. And, and I know that technology is probably getting closer to enabling new development to put recreational facilities on top of buildings. You know, I've seen it. I've, you know, I've seen developers come in and do that. But I've also been hearing that it's becoming more and more difficult, and sometimes they're actually removing on these townhomes as of late. They're removing that because of the potential for lawsuits because proper ceiling wasn't done or whatever, and you got people walking all over a roof. And it does add to the expense of, of any building. So, it's a total balancing act that everybody's under, trying to provide, you know, the open space, trying to provide the parking, and trying to provide a good livable environment. So, it's tough. And, and, yeah, we have a tough job, and, and City Council has a tough job to try and, and weed through all of these requirements. So, at the end of the day, we're still promoting high-density new development to come in, yet create a livable type of community. And it's not easy. I get it. And, you know, quite frankly, it probably all boils down to money. And, at the end of the day, the city seems to be short on it, and the development community, along with their financing people, they gotta hit a certain profit margin. Otherwise, they just walk. They won't, they just won't do it. So, it's a tough thing. I, I get it. It's a, it's a tough thing. But I'm still of the opinion that we have good ordinances, master plans, specific plans in place to address these issues. And if we so chose, we could modify any or, or all of those without having an additional plan that we have to adhere to that may or may not be consistent with everything else. So, that's my opinion.
Right. But I, I do think that that's sort of the intent, though, to take that bird's-eye view as well as a, a very specific view to, to the urban core neighborhoods that really would benefit from green, a little bit more green space here and there, wherever we can identify opportunities to do so. So, I, I think the, overall, one of the benefits to this, I think, is, is leveraging and, and looking for opportunities that will actually tie these efforts together across the entire jurisdiction. So, as well as within those specific communities. Other thoughts?
I do, I have a comment, some information and a question for staff. My comment was, I thank you so much for the information and the presentation today. While listening to the presentation, it brought back, one of the things that I have been identifying and looking at the Escondido, and it's kinda tied to this presentation a little bit, and also involving the community comments into the green space. The information I have is that I noticed that I have been in Escondido, I have been living in Escondido for almost forty years, and there is a corner of Felicita and Escondido. There's an intersection right there, just right by Vons. If, if I can take you back there.
Felicita and Center City Parkway, or?
No, Felicita and, and Center, but it's right there in Escondido Boulevard, on this side. And it's right behind Vons, across from Vons. I've noticed that there's always has a small green space, like a very small park right there. When I first saw it, it's right in that corner, didn't think of anything back then. It was not, have any impact because to me, a park is a huge place with children playing, you know, with tennis court and with all those really nice things for activities to play. But that corner caught my attention as I'm keeping going back and forth to Escondido, back and forth for, for many years. Then suddenly, I realized that that little corner with space, you know, with grass and maybe, just maybe one tree, I believe. But a lot of people, a lot of people stopped there, not for a long time. But I've seen people walk back and forth to the supermarket, you know, just around. The, the surrounding resident would go out there and sit there for a little bit and then leave. But, that, when, when you're talking about green space, it clicked in my mind, that space is very useful, very useful in Escondido. So, my question for the city staff, as Commissioner Wyler asked, what would be the position of the Escondido City allowing some of this small space that you have and within the land owned by the city would allow some of those spaces open?
So, you're, you're asking, could we do this elsewhere?
Yes, yes. I, that's my question.
Sure. So, it is possible. It's a matter of identifying the location and then funding whatever might be necessary for improvements, maintenance, and the like. It's not gonna be easy. I don't know that there's a lot of spaces out there like that that are currently available and for use of that sort, but the ability to maintain it is really, I think, a lot of the issue on that.
Right, right. And, and that's something that we have to take into consideration in, for the long-term plan. But the, for short-term plan, for the, for the space, maybe identify the area, and then once we have the land, and when we have the layout, and then we, we can start building what we need for the long-term. And I'm sure when you reach out to the community, and if the community need a green space, they probably would provide you with a good idea, some type of donation, some type of grant, anything like that would help to maintain, you know, the space for the future. But, it, it just came to mind that space, it's, it was very useful, very useful. And looks beautiful, too.
So, community engagement, that really emphasizes that, that aspect as well?
Yes.
Because that way you get more buy-in and hopefully, I, I understand it's been an issue for certain parts of the, the Creek Trail as well, where the community was very involved in, in establishing a garden, but I also understand there's maintenance issues, which it's something, it's just, it's just a real, the fact of, fact of life here. So, it's something we have to take into consideration, but certainly doesn't mean we shouldn't try. Okay. Other thoughts? Comments?
I have a question.
Vice Chair Rainey, please.
Thank you. So, I have a question real quick. So, they said that Carlsbad has forty percent open space requirement. Can someone clarify what Escondido has?
We don't have anything, I don't believe we have anything specifically called out in our zoning code or, or general plan.
Oh, okay.
Or I may be in...
All right, thank you.
No, I think you, you do. You have open space, active and passive, per, per person.
Correct, right, that is correct. But as far as a percentage of the city, city property or city land, I don't believe there's, there's a called-out percentage. I think it's about like eleven hundred square feet per household or per individual. I don't remember, but, you know, that's not gonna give you a number of percentage of land when you've got different-sized lots eventually, all that kinda thing. So, there could be a calculation done, but it's not readily available as far as I'm aware.
No problem, but certainly nowhere close to forty percent, right? So, or anywhere in that. Okay. All right, thank you. That was my main question.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
Just, just one last comment. If I recall, at the, maybe a couple of presentations back, there was a, a development that the city was thinking about donating the land to that development, maybe a couple acres somewhere. Now, if the city decided to do that, and it's just merely just a question for, for, for land use purposes, if the city decided to donate or to sell those available plan for the, for the development, can, will, can or will the city put some requirement that if you are using the land, the city land, you are required to have some open space, green open space?
So, through any type of an approval for a development project, there's a potential, and I think for anything that we, that we would be selling property in order to accommodate, there's a development agreement that would likely be in place and a purchase-sale agreement that would dictate some of these terms. They are project by project, and depending on the scope of what's there and what's being proposed, that's, that's how it's kind of identified. But yeah, that, that is something that we do look at with various projects.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. If I, if I could intervene, just to add to that as well, we're confined also by the Surplus Land Act for any transactions with our city-owned real property. So, if we're talking about selling our real property, we have to go through a process unless that land is, quote, exempt surplus land or not subject to the Surplus Land Act. But, if we're selling the land, it probably is, in most cases, subject to the Surplus Land Act. That means we have to put it out for notice to certain agencies, including affordable housing agencies, certain parks and rec group and that sort of thing. So, we can't just, you know, move forward with selling land and making conditions for the future sale and restricting it without going through that process. If we're talking about using our own land for the city, we own that real property, but we're maintaining that, we're not selling it, then that would be for the city's use. That would not be subject to the Surplus Land Act. We would not go through that process.
So, as a follow-up to that, then if, per se, we were able to, the, the city was able to secure some grants, I, I don't know if there are grants out there available that could be utilized to improve and maintain city excess property. And granted, city excess property, meaning you use it in the future for something. I don't know, it may be a building, it may be whatever it happens to be. But today, it's just a field full of weeds or something else, but it's not being utilized. I don't know. Are there grants that are out there that could serve that purpose?
There are. Again, maintenance may be an issue for the long haul, so that's something that we'd have to factor and, and talk with staff, et cetera, to make sure that there was, there's an enabling factor there. But, yes, there is money out there. EPA has significant green infrastructure support for many communities. And I think Hermy mentioned a number of them. Other comments, thoughts, suggestions as we go forth and present this to City Council? Okay. So, just a, one logistical item, I was advised that it, we, not, all three of us may not be able to present, sorry, that all three of us might not be able to present to City Council. Could you give us a little insight on that?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Yeah, I heard about that. Interim Director Feinstein was mentioning today of, of the Subcommittee, the Planning Commission Subcommittee, all three of you presenting to the City Council. And it rung a bell in my head of the bylaws, Article Two, Section A, Nine, under Chair. And it states, "The Chair shall, when called upon, represent or appoint one of the members to represent the Commission before the City Council. Such representations shall reflect the view of the majority of the Commission on any particular matter upon which the Commission has acted." So, it seems to me that one person, that what's contemplated in the bylaws is one person will speak on behalf of the Commission to the City Council. Now, I know this is the Subcommittee, but the Subcommittee reports to the Planning Commission. Our Subcommittee, the Planning Commission Subcommittee does not report to the City Council. They have their own Subcommittee. So, what's going on here is you are, you Subcommittee are reporting to the Planning Commission, and Planning Commission's having a discussion, and the majority view coming from that discussion will be carried forward to the City Council, I think by one of you. I, I think the other two, you can certainly attend and, and be there. And if the City Council so chooses to call on anyone specific, you know, to, you know, if you have some specific expertise or something, yeah, it's up to the City Council. But according to our bylaws, I think one person is presenting.
Do you all have any, take issue with that or have any comments? No? Okay. So, I guess I'm it, then. All right. Thank you. Let's move on to the next item, which is the Housing and Community Investment Study, the East Valley Specific Plan.
Good evening, Chair. My name's Darren Parker. I'm with the City of Escondido Plan Department as Associate Planner. I'm here today to give you an update on the East Valley Specific Plan. You know, before I give you an update on, on the specific plan, just let me give you some background first on the East Valley Parkway Area Plan. In two thousand and four, that the city of Escondido that approved the, the East Valley Parkway Area Plan, and at that time, you know, you know, the purpose of that area plan was to implement strategies to revitalize the area in two... In 2012, the City of Escondido updated the general plan and they identified 11 target areas. Those 11 target areas were provided to the city to provide a unique opportunity for achieving the general plan vision. One of those target areas was the East Valley area. In 2020, the city was awarded grant funding to develop three different housing studies. These three housing studies and plans will be linked together through a common work program called the Housing and Community Investment Study. The City of Escondido is developing the East Valley Pacific Plan in collaboration with local residents, businesses and landowners to provide a future vision for the East Valley Pacific Plan. The East Valley Pacific Plan right now currently is available online to review and comment at the address right there presented in the slide. What is a Pacific Plan? Well, a Pacific Plan is a comprehensive planning and zoning document designed to implement the goals and policies of the general plan. Its primary vision and focus is on a defined graphical area of the city that establishes neighborhood-specific design and regulations. The Pacific Plan will contain detailed development standards and set forth the distribution of land uses, infrastructure requirements and implementation measures. The East Valley Pacific Plan will be a future guide for development over the next 20 years, 10 to 20 years. The Pacific Plan will also identify areas for new housing, retail, entertainment, office and commercial uses. The East Valley Pacific Plan covers approximately 191 acres within the City of Escondido, mainly comprised of private and public ownership. The location of the Pacific Plan is generally bound by the Escondido Creek to the north, Harding Street to the east, Grand Avenue and East Second Street to the south, and North Hickory, South Hickory and North Fig Streets to the west. The overall vision of the East Valley Pacific Plan incorporates a dynamic mix of land uses, ensuring a variety of residential options linked together through safe streets and business corridor. The plan creates an inviting, you know, atmosphere and quality of life with attractive public spaces and connecting paths that leverage the Escondido Creek Trail and provide a unique and artistic identity that attracts local residents and North County inland residents to live, shop, dine and recreate. By creating the East Valley Pacific Plan, this will provide the city with a unique strategy to develop more housing in important areas to meet the state and city projected housing goals and requirements and to meet our own goals for maintaining community character and strong neighborhoods. The Pacific Plan would provide a variety of housing densities and supports a flexible range of housing types such as small unit sizes, compact, you know, housing types, live-work or other innovative, you know, housing formats and design techniques. The East Valley Pacific Plan could potentially create approximately 5,000-plus dwelling units, provide approximately 10-plus acres of additional open space and increase jobs in the area while maintaining the community character. The Pacific Plan will also provide flexible land use regulation to convert underperforming commercial space with more intensive and higher-performing commercial land uses. The East Valley Pacific Plan, you know, designates the majority of properties along the East Valley Parkway as mixed-use, which is identified in purple up there in the slide, which will create a more urban and vibrant character and enhance public amenities. You know, as it translates into larger commercial to the east and downtown to the west, general commercial uses are clustered at the corner of East Valley Parkway and Ash Street to encourage more commercial footprints and create activity node to shopping, transit and residences. Figure 3-1 slide shows the applicable land uses, zoning, minimum density and maximum densities permitted within the East Valley Pacific Plan. Table 3-1 also includes a target production point for each land use designation. The East Valley Pacific Plan will also include a density bonus program which allow the city to transfer density from underdeveloped or underutilized properties within the plan area to other properties in the plan area. The potential development of the East Valley Pacific Plan as shown in Table 3-2, you know, it estimates the potential growth by land use type over the next 20 years. The table also shows the difference compared to existing conditions and you can see that it's a major difference in the slide. A vision of the East Valley Pacific Plan includes incorporating an active, open space network, attractive public spaces, connecting paths, parkland and open space. The East Valley Pacific Plan would also establish park overlay zones to integrate park, public parkland and open door spaces with proximity to schools, transit, trails and active nodes. The Parkway Overlay Zone would span over multiple blocks in various areas throughout the plan area. The Park Overlay Zone would allow for future parks. You know, examples of those parks are like pocket parks, which are parks of no more than one acre. Neighborhood parks, which are characterized, parks over three acres that have both active and passive recreational options. Linear parks, which are longer than they are wide and typically follow a linear object such as rail lines, utility easements, waterfronts, creeks and alleys. The East Valley Pacific Plan is designed to complement the plans and efforts included in the Trail Master Plan by increasing access, signage and amenities to the Escondido Creek Trail as well as site and building design to maximize the aesthetics and activity along the corridor of the Creek Trail. The East Valley Pacific Plan would also provide reductions to carbon emissions while providing additional open space areas. Would lower building DSG emissions would provide an emphasis to the Escondido Creek Trail, as I previously mentioned. Would also create opportunities to provide additional bike lanes and access to public spaces. The Pacific Plan would also provide supplemental parking to promote reduction in vehicle emissions and vehicles' mile traveled by requiring EV charging stations, bicycle parking and loading and unloading spaces. To give you kind of a timeframe of where the city has come from back in mid-2020 and where we are now, these next two slides will give you a timeframe of where we're at. The city officially launched the East Valley Parkway or Valley Pacific Plan in mid-2020. An existing conditions report was prepared by our consultant that identified key issues which provided a solid baseline to facilitate community input from community members, business stakeholders and interest groups. Interest parties were engaged in the project through press and media notifications. Spanish translations were also provided to the community. Our first round of outreach was conducted in the summer of 2020 to gather community input. Surveys were sent to businesses and property stakeholders. Online surveys were also conducted. The city also created and maintained a project website. Comment forms were accessible to the public. And in the fall of 2020, our second outreach, which was all virtual by the way, that our outreach because due to COVID, came up where we gathered more input from the community as well. And as of today, the draft East Valley Pacific Plan was released in spring of 2021 for public review. Our release of the draft EIR will be in the fall of this year. One area where staff would like to get some additional feedback from the commissioners is on the permitted land uses section regarding drive-through facilities in Table 7-2, page 69 of the East Valley Pacific Plan. The draft East Valley Pacific Plan currently allows drive-through facilities but only within the commercial area with a CUP, which is a limited area, as you can see in the map there. Our general commercial area is limited to the, I guess, the light orange areas only. Most of our drive-through facilities along East Valley or our Long East Valley Parkway right now, they would not be permitted and the ones that are existing now would be non-conformant or become non-conforming uses. So staff would like to get some feedback from the commissioners or any thoughts or comments that you might have. You know, overall, the city staff is looking for any comments and feedback on the draft Pacific Plan. The overall Pacific Plan still needs to be adopted by city council. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Appreciate it. Very nice presentation, very thorough. Questions for Mr. Parker? I think we also have, is there a public comment?
There are no public comments.
Questions for the East Valley Pacific Plan? Commissioner Wyler?
So I see where the Escondido Creek goes through here and if you could go back a few slides where you talked about park-type facilities, I had a... Yep, nope, the other one.
Next one.
There we go. That one. So the, I don't know, illustrations off to the right. Are these the ones, is this what's intended to go along that linear park along the creek? Is this kind of the, I guess, the vision?
That's kind of an, you know, example of what a linear park looks like along a trail. Right now, the East Valley Pacific Plan has design guidelines for landscaping parkways, you know, adjacent to the creek trail.
Okay, so then, well, the city owns that right-of-way, correct? So within that right-of-way where we're going to have, you know, the future parks, are we, is the city going to be able to improve, use city funds or development impact fee funds to improve that corridor? And I believe, I mean, there have been some improvements because they've opened it up and then bicycles get to go down through there and everything, which is really nice. But I'm wondering if it's going to start getting more to the direction where we're going to put more money into it, where you put trees and so on and so forth. And if that comes from the development community adjacent? Or does it come from the city through development impact fees?
There's no exact requirements right now within the East Valley Pacific Plan to improve the trail itself. But where there are design guidelines is when you have development of budding it, there are certain setbacks to where landscaping will be required and additional, kind of like these linear parks could come up. And where we're like, you know, looking at getting the funding is from development impact fees, potentially, and that would be used towards only the East Valley Parkway Pacific Plan.
If I could add to that as well, there is currently a work effort in place that we are going through and we're going to actually be bringing before the commission in probably, I think, September, the Escondido Creek Trail funded, it's a partially grant-funded project to improve the entire creek trail, I believe, from the Transit Center all the way. I don't remember the exact extents, but there's a, I've got a 200 sheet, set of drawings in my office right now, I'm looking over. So we're going to bring that forward and that's going to provide improvements to the area here. Owen, I think, has some additional info on that, too.
The other project that will be... Will be under construction here shortly are the Creek Trail Crossings. So there'll be seven street crossings that will be enhanced with at least rapid red flashy beacons, enhanced crosswalks and then at midway, there'll actually be a signal, a pedestrian signal. So you have that and then you also have two additional Creek Trail Crossings at Quince and Tulip that will probably be under construction later in the fall, so.
And are those actions, are they also supported by that $8 million, $6 million grant that came through last year sometime?
No, I believe the bulk of the funding for those crossings is actually from outside that, I believe.
Okay, so that would be in addition to the...
Correct, yeah, the trail crossings are already funded by a different mechanism. The $8 million you're referring to is for the Creek Trail Plan.
Right, okay. So I think, getting back to our green infrastructure conversation, I mean, this is part and parcel of what we mean by leveraging current efforts so that we look for these opportunities where we can perhaps either do more, do different, based on community input, et cetera. But anyway, I'm sorry. So are there other comments, questions? Yes. Commissioner Paul?
Great, so you mentioned drive-throughs. So can you tell us where the existing drive-throughs are? You can pull up that other map for that other page, it'd be great.
So most of the existing, so most of the existing drive-throughs are from about, from Fig all the way to Ash Street along East Valley Parkway. I think currently, right now, we have like Carl's Jr.'s out there. I believe Burrows and Fries, which is just currently, you know, currently constructed. McDonald's is also out there as well. According to this plan, they would be legal non-conforming. It does not mean that they would have to go away. It just means if they end up redeveloping, they could never redevelop back to a drive-through restaurant again.
Well, McDonald's is at Ash, which is going to be general commercial.
Yeah, so McDonald's is okay because it falls under that orange.
And burger, the burritos and fries, whatever, that's also, I think, between Beach and Ash, right?
No, that's actually on, I believe it's on the cedar right there, so it falls under the purple. And then right across the street, you also have like TJ Tacos is also there as well, across the street. So they would be in non-conformance, so.
So I appreciate the staff asking us about that. What's the staff's motivation to not allow that along that?
So staff's motivation was basically, when we asked, we surveyed with the community and got input from them, they wanted the higher density, closer to their, you know, major streets, which is East Valley Parkway as well. They didn't really mention that they didn't want any drive-throughs or anything like that. It's just that the mixed-use, you know, density is intensified, kind of in the purple as you can see, which happens to be right where the drive-through restaurants are.
Wow, okay, how about a drive-through overlay?
Well, do I understand correctly that these, the current ones would be grandfathered in, so to speak?
They would be grandfathered in.
It's just that further development wouldn't, you wouldn't, the city would not entertain.
Would not allow it.
Right.
Now, it doesn't say that it doesn't allow for ATM kiosks or pharmacies within the East Valley Pacific Plan, those are currently permitted.
Right, but they're just because they're not drive-through. In any case, they wouldn't be drive-through in that.
Okay, so I have a bunch of other questions, unfortunately.
So wait, did you have a comment? Did you have any feedback then to the staff on the use of the drive-throughs?
Yeah, I think it wouldn't be appropriate just to say, to cut it off completely. I think we should look at, look and spend more time talking about where they are and what's the impact if we say no. So I was really kind of serious when I said, "How about an overlay zone?" I mean, that's another way to deal with it.
Yeah, Commissioner Paul, before you went on to your next questions, if we could kind of finish this line of discussion. You know, at least then we can give feedback to Mr. Parker. Yeah, I kind of agree. I'm not ready to just say no to any drive-through type facilities within the mixed-use zone. I'm just not there. Unless staff or there is a big outcry from the public that says, you know, "We just don't want anymore. We've got enough, we don't anymore, we're just not going to approve anymore, except for within the general commercial areas." Now, in the general commercial areas, are any future ones, they're required to have a conditional use permit?
They are required to have a conditional use permit, yes.
And so that would be the same thing with the mixed-use area?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I'm still fine with that. I think, you know, I know at one time there was a big backlash on drive-through type facilities, but we just went through a pandemic, which shows, okay, well, maybe it's not a bad thing to have some of these. You know, and we still have the conditional use permit process that we can go through to make sure it's appropriate for whatever particular location they're going to go in. So anyway, there's... So anyway, there's my two cents, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
I was just going to clarify, as a commissioner, that we're not saying that they have to go away or anything like that. What the Pacific Plan calls for right now in the mixed-use is no new drive-throughs at all, can't be constructed. Now, it doesn't mean if McDonald's was to leave tomorrow that another drive-through restaurant could not come in, that our nonconformant ordinance right now says, you know, after six months, then you kind of lose your nonconformity and then you have to bring the property into conformance with the current zoning.
Commissioner Serrato?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of agree with staff on this one. It just doesn't make sense to me to, I mean, if we want the high density to have drive-throughs along that busy street, and I mean, worst case, they can just be outside of that zoning. I mean, you could still have drive-throughs nearby, and the fact that they get grandfathered in, I don't see too much conflict there.
Thank you. Vice Chair Rainey, do you have a comment?
I kind of tend to agree with just doing a blanket, I mean, I understand there, if someone comes and takes over from McDonald's, they can do the drive-through and stuff like that, but to say, the pandemic changed me a bit. So I tend to agree with them that, I don't necessarily agree with saying that they can't have drive-throughs, other than the grandfathered-in ones. That's my comment.
Okay. Anyone else? I personally agree with the high density, I mean, the whole intent is to increase density, and I know with the RENA requirements that we're putting a lot of eggs in this East Valley specific plan basket, and if we really want to get that density, it strikes me that we ought to zone it from the get-go to make sure we get that kind of density.
Yeah, I understand that. It, there's a lot of competing interests in this kind of thing. Jokingly, Owen said, well, we can have the drive-through lanes stacked through someone's parking garage, right? So there are competing interests like that, right? Things you have to think about. There are quite a few fast food drive-through facilities there already. There was amendment to our zoning ordinance, maybe two, three years ago, maybe four, I don't remember for sure, that put a requirement that drive-through facilities require conditional use permits in almost all zones. And it has guidelines that talk about separation between drive-through facilities, so there's not hypothetically going to be two right next to each other, at least moving forward, or that if there are, there are certain design requirements and considerations that are made in that instance. So if we were to look at allowing drive-through facilities through conditional use permits throughout the specific plan, we would definitely want to think about the ability to put those type of design requirements on there, just like we do in our standard commercial zones. But, you know, that, it really doesn't get to the question that you asked about how that affects our RENA numbers. It's either housing, commercial, or both. So depending on constructability, that's kind of where you're going to land on that.
Commissioner Wyler?
And, you know, and I'm all for, you know, increasing the density along this corridor. I think it's, I think it's appropriate to have that higher density there. But I think that there are occasions where creative design would be able to incorporate both the high-density and whatever commercial operation has a drive-through facility, you know, such as a CVS, or, you know, where you pick up your prescriptions. I've seen, or maybe CVS doesn't do it, but Walgreens or one of the other ones, you've got banks, and then you've got, of course, fast food. But there's a, there was a building on the corner of West Valley Parkway and Ninth, and it was different retail outlets, but the building was big enough where they were actually able to create a drive-through around the building, but it didn't go, they basically left the building itself with the pillars all the way around, but made the walls, they brought the walls in so that they had a drive-through right through what was the building, which was now open to the outside. So they were able to creatively utilize a regular resident, or I'm sorry, a regular commercial retail building and create a drive-through facility. So that creativity is there. They, just because it's, what we see today is mostly single-story drive-through type facilities on a lot, doesn't preclude from building right on top of it with residential. There may be health code sort of things that you got, and fire code and all these other things, but those are other code requirements that still have to be met. I just don't want to preclude something that might not be a bad thing to have in this area by just blanketing, saying, yeah, none in the mixed-use area. I think by using the conditional use permit, and if somebody's creative enough, why not? I mean, you know, but still promote the high density along the way.
Commissioner Paul?
Yeah, in the other table with allowable uses, there's a lot of stuff that's not allowed that I look at it and I say, why can't we allow that with a CUP? This would be one of those things.
Commissioner Serrato?
Yeah, I guess just one other concern is really the traffic congestion. So, you know, we have higher density in these areas, and then you have a drive-through bleeding out into the main road, like I'm just thinking about in and out coming in there, and how does that impact the traffic on East Valley Parkway, especially, I mean, that's already getting more and more congested. Now, we have 6,000 new units. I don't know, I just see that as being an issue moving forward. So that's my thought on that.
Any other thoughts, comments, feedback for staff? Okay. Mr. Parker, does that suffice for now, for feedback? I assume we're going to...
There's some good feedback, yes.
Okay. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Actually, I do have one, I had one more thought here on the East Valley specific plan. Is this the first time that we've tried to think about a TPP in the land use, in the zoning?
I believe for a specific plan, yes.
And what I'm referring to is the target production point? And have we ever had an in-lu fee if one does not meet that before?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So this is a new feature with respect to projects, okay.
It's a very creative way of trying to entice development to hit some higher densities.
Right.
It's been something that I know that our former director was really strong on.
Yeah, no, it struck me...
No pun, but, you know, his last name being Strong, but, you know, it was something that he was really, really energetic about and thought it was a great, a great way to come, get into this ability to get that density.
Yeah, I mean, in lieu of not having an inclusionary ordinance at all, so that's one way to do that. Okay.
And then to clarify on that, as in the funds from that in-lu fee, go towards affordable housing or improvements or things like that?
Right.
Within the East Valley specific plan?
Within that plan, right?
Yes.
So it stays in the neighborhood? Okay. Thank you. Okay, update on the HCIS?
Point of order? Point of order? I had some other questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to...
You asked me to pause while we talked about drive-throughs.
Ah, right, so sorry.
Okay. Your table 3-1, land use designations. So I'd like to know what the existing zoning is for what's going to be urban, residential, four, five, 21 dwelling units per acre. I don't really see a comparison with what is existing.
So the primary current zoning out there right now was originally HP. That actually got converted to commercial professional zone, which does not allow for any residential at all. Now, with this zoning, it will allow for residential and high-density residential within the area.
So everything on here was zone commercial before?
I would say mainly, yes, majority-wise.
Is there anything on there now that's currently zoned less than urban four, five?
No.
So, page 49, 5.5.2, private development. There's a clause, non-residential four, it says, "Private development projects carried out by private developers shall strive to implement the following TDM strategies." This is for parking, I guess. Number four, under non-residential, says, "Develop alternate workplace telecommuting and/or alternate work schedule programs." And I'm not sure why we would do this for a commercial project. They're going to build based on a certain amount of employees working there, and they would take into consideration employees that are not going to work there, but I don't know why we would have them study alternates to their own project.
Yeah, and that's a good question. Is this mainly just a strategy is what this is mainly? It's not required or anything like that?
Okay. And I think everything else I have questions about is in section seven. And on page 64, we talk about public and private open space, and this is a little confusing to me. There's a requirement here, 250 square feet of private open space area shall be provided per dwelling unit? And then the next bullet point says, "A minimum of 150 square feet per unit if the required open space is provided in a courtyard or publicly accessible space," et cetera, et cetera. And that's confusing to me. Instead of the 250 square feet of private open space, they can have 150 square feet of public space?
Yeah, I think what it's really getting at is the ability to do, you know, common open space, and you're going to have a bit less of that in exchange for, or by providing that, you get, you get some incentive to get more density and more units on there by not having 250 square feet per unit wrapped up in that private, in that private development or that private home or unit. It's giving you more credit, basically, almost two-for-one, right?
So you would have no, they would, nobody would ever build any private open space if they could just build less public open space?
There are other ways, like in this specific plan, where there is incentives for developers to provide additional open space, and those incentives are, you know, the increase in the four-area ratio, that there's other incentives that tells them that if they provide additional open space, that there's more incentives that they could get building-wise. And I believe that's in the implementation part.
Okay, I guess I just don't, I just don't understand that.
So Commissioner Paul, maybe I can also, it does, in that, in that same thing, that same bullet point there, it goes on to say that at least half of the units have to still have at least a 50-square-foot patio or something of that sort. So it's not completely doing away with any type of, or any of the units having any private open space. It's just really kind of trading off some of the private open space on a lot of the units, or on half of the units, for more common space for the, for the project as a whole.
Okay, okay. I just want to try to make sure I understood the point. Only for clarification then, so the requirement is 250 square feet per unit of private open space, or 150 square feet per unit of open space available to the public plus the 50 square feet of private balcony area? So in other words, you're either going to go, you're either going to get 250 square feet per unit or 200 square feet per unit?
200 square feet for half the units, 150 for the other half, because that 50 square feet's only required for 50% of the units.
Got it, okay, all right.
Okay, and then I had some questions about the tree canopy coverage. Page 65, one of the bullets, says, "Tree canopy coverage shall be 25%, 15%, 35%." And then on page 67, it talks about landscaped area? And so some of these, the tree canopy percentage is more than the landscaped area, and some of it is less than the landscaped area. And I was just curious about what the definition then of tree canopy is versus the definition of landscaping. So landscaped area in urban four and five is a 35% minimum landscape, 25% tree canopy. Mixed use, it's only 20% minimum landscape, but the same 25% tree canopy. And then general commercial is 30% minimum landscaping, but then only 15% tree canopy. And you would think if you're going to do 30% landscaping, you could do 30% tree canopy, unless there's some different definitions or something.
That your tree canopy is only for designated parking areas, that has to be shaded.
So it's only 15% of the parking that has trees? It's not 15% of the total project?
No, it's 25% of the total area in residential and mixed-use parking, or mixed-use projects, sorry, and then 15% in commercial areas.
Of only the parking area?
If I can maybe clarify, I believe, so I will start by saying Darren's much more familiar with this document than I am, so Darren, feel free to correct me again if I'm, if I'm wrong. But the tree canopy is the, obviously, it's the area that the tree covers, which will include hardscape, too. It does, it's not just the landscaping, you know, a tree canopy goes out, you know, 10, 12, 15, whatever, feet, right? So that covers area that's parking lot, that's not landscaped, right? So there's, there's how your difference can come in, that you might have tree coverage that is, that is beyond the number of square feet of landscaping that you have.
Right. In this case, the commercial, it's the opposite, it's 30% minimum landscape and 15% tree, minimum tree canopy.
And that probably is a result of the fact that you've got a large parking lot, right? And that, you know, the other thing that, as I'm speaking and I'm thinking about, the Green Building Code does have requirements for a certain amount of canopy coverage in a, in a parking lot. So that's something that we, that, as we're talking through this, and this is exactly why we have these discussions, it brings to our attention that we have to make sure that everything is consistent with each other, right? So that's a great thing to point out there. Darren, if we can make sure we follow up on that.
Yeah. Okay, and then on page 41, there's this cool picture of the alley, is it page 41? Yeah, there's this very modern alley picture, alleyway, there's some, you know, some people, and there's like zero lot line development, the house is right up to the alley. But then in this, in this table, that same table we were looking at, it says that the alley has to have a five-foot setback for fences. So I'm not sure what would happen in that five-foot area, because I don't think anyone's going to want to maintain the part on the other side of their fence that's in the alley.
That could also be like a stormwater requirement as well back there, where we can, you know, aesthetically make the alley look pleasing for pedestrians when they're walking down there, so that five feet could be landscaped and part of their stormwater requirement.
Okay, and so there would be, the picture that shows a zero lot line development is, there's never going to be any development like that in the alley, right?
No, because it's a five-foot setback, like you said.
And then, and then, right, I just had a whole bunch of comments about what was allowed and not allowed, and a whole bunch of comments about the grammar. So I'm just going to give you my copy, Adam, you know, before I leave.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions around the East Valley specific plan? Nope. All right. Call that a wrap. Housing and Community Investment Study for the housing element.
Sure. So we don't have a PowerPoint or any type of presentation on this. We've gone over the housing element several times over the past probably four or five months, maybe even longer. But this is basically an opportunity for the commission to provide staff with any input on the current draft. I will say that our current draft is still in strike-through, underlined format. I will say that our current draft is still in strike-through, underlined format. We have not yet received a response from HCD on our most recent draft, and we are eagerly awaiting that so we can get it finalized, because we don't want to bring forward a document that they won't certify. So we are, I'm emailing them daily, trying to get an update. So the item is scheduled formally to come before you for consideration in two weeks, so it's something that needs to be in place. And, you know, if I don't start hearing something from them soon, I might have to talk to the mayor and get him to call them or something, I don't know. But yeah, it unfortunately is still in this strike-through, underlined format, but we're looking for feedback from the commission. A lot of, or basically all of the changes that have been made at this point are due to comments and conversations that staff has had with HCD in order to get the document into the state where they would be able to certify that. So our understanding is that we've done what they've asked in order to get there, but we don't know that for sure until they let us know, yeah, this is something they're good with. But again, if you do have any input, questions, et cetera, please let us know. And I'll turn it over to you, Chair.
So comments, questions on the draft housing element? Feedback for staff?
Looks great.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Wiler?
I had a, I just had a question, because there was a pretty detailed memo that was prepared that, you know, brought up some interesting things. And I wasn't sure what staff's thoughts were regarding just your overall thoughts about the memo, and is our housing element deficient based on some of the things that were brought up in the memo? And one particular item that I kind of highlighted was, says here, "The goal of the AFFH is to break up areas of concentrated poverty and affluence by citing low-income housing and higher-income neighborhoods." How do we do that? I mean, other than actually going in to an area of the city and taking a block and redesignating it higher density, or you put an affordable housing project in the middle of some existing neighborhood? I'm just not sure, you know, it's one of the goals of this, so how do you achieve this, though? That seems almost impossible.
Yeah, that's one of the challenges that we've got, is that there's certain requirements from the state that we have to put into our plan and see what we can do to figure out ways to accomplish it. But you're right, housing in affluent areas, the property is not cheap, and it's not the type of place where you're going to see the density that hopefully affordable housing would be able to thrive in. So it is a big challenge, we acknowledge that for sure.
So that means, I mean, once again, I keep hearing these allusions to the fact that the East Valley specific plan is going to save us from being non-conforming with the state. So this really thoughtful, I thought as well, Commissioner Wiler, I thought it was a very thoughtful memo. Was this from the HCD? This memo? No. These individuals who are quoted here, Eric Felix and Lauren Harper?
No, that is not from them.
That's not HCD, right? Okay. But I do, I totally agree with Commissioner Wiler that it provided a lot of good food for thought. And I highlighted a number of items there, too. I agree with Commissioner Wiler that it's really hard to go ahead and try to cite affordable housing in currently moderate, even moderate income and of higher-income neighborhoods. It's going to be very challenging, but not that you shouldn't try, if you can, to attract developers to at least, I mean, the whole point is to integrate, right? So that we have a combination of high, higher-income, middle-income, lower-income areas that are a little bit more balanced to assure equity across the board and an increased quality of life for everybody. So I know that's really hard, so I acknowledge that as well. But I guess I'm also asking how and if you plan, the staff plans to address these, some of these comments.
I'm going to have to go through this with more of a fine-tooth comb. I know that previous Director Strong has seen it, and he's been really taking the lead on the housing element, so it's something that I'm working with. I'm still obviously in contact with him on this and other things, and he's been great help, but it's something that I need to really go over in a little more detail.
Okay. Well, I'd appreciate that, actually, because I think that'll really strengthen, if we can at least address some of these, it'll strengthen the housing element altogether.
And I did ask Kurt if he would speak to one of them specifically.
Okay.
Yeah, I could speak to the section titled invalidating Proposition S, which is a topic near and dear to my heart. So the commenters here suggest, assert that the city does not have to abide by Prop S at all, because the Housing Crisis Act, they claim invalidates Prop S. And the short answer to that is, it's not as simple as the commenters suggest. Prop S, as I think everyone knows, was enacted as a ballot measure by a vote of the people in nineteen ninety-eight. Government Code Section sixty-six-three-hundred, which is what, which is the Housing Crisis Act, which is what SB three-thirty enacted, is not clear as to whether a pre-existing growth management-type ordinance is invalidated or not. And I can dive deeper into the weeds on that, but in general, the city's position is that Prop S is still a valid law. It would only be completely repealed if there's another vote of the people or a court order that requires us to repeal it. Now, interestingly enough, the city of Encinitas is going through a, I won't say similar issue, but they have what's, it's called Prop A, they have Proposition A, which is actually really restrictive. It actually does not allow the city to move forward with even adopting a housing element or doing any update. They can't adopt a development agreement. They basically can't do anything unless the city, the people vote on it. And so the city is handcuffed from even providing the housing element to HCD. And HCD is saying, "Where's your housing element?" They say, "We can't do it because the city won't vote to do it." So there's a lawsuit right now where the city of Encinitas has sued the HCD for a declaratory judgment from the court. And to, the city wants the judge to say, or provide an opinion on whether their Proposition A is repealed in the limited sense that it will allow them to at least provide a housing element and update a housing element. But the city is not asking for the entire Prop A to be repealed. Now, I haven't seen like the briefing of all of that, so it's perhaps HCD is responding and saying, "No, no, your whole thing needs to be repealed." So that might be the issues that the court's going to decide. There was a hearing on it, a final hearing on the merits in June, I think mid-June, and I looked at the Register of Actions to see where that's at, and it looks like there's no final order yet, but there's been some request for further briefing. And so I think there's some issues that the court is maybe still looking into. When that final court order comes out, that will give us a little, maybe, a clearer sense of how Prop S relates to the Housing Crisis Act. But in general, we are monitoring Prop S, and we're making it very clear to HCD and the housing element that we're monitoring to make sure that Prop S is not a constraint to housing. And HCD has not, you know, come down on us, kind of like they have with City of Encinitas and their, the language of their proposition. So at this point, we treat Prop S as a validly enacted law, but we're monitoring it closely to ensure it does not reflect a constraint or impediment to housing in the city. And we're continuing to monitor court cases and things like that, that maybe shed some more light on how to interpret the Housing Crisis Act in context of Prop S.
Yeah, and to follow up on that, and I knew about the city of Encinitas and their Prop A. Carlsbad has Prop E, which essentially put a cap on the number of units in four, and they have, they broke the city in four quadrants, but they put a cap on the number of units in each one of those quadrants. And they're coming up against the same thing, where this SB three-thirty essentially says, "Yeah, we got to toss that out." And that proposition was approved back in the eighties. And so they're struggling with the same thing. Indications are being told to us, at least from certain people over at the city, that yeah, this is, it's going to be tossed out, and there aren't going to be any caps. So I see it very similar to Proposition S, where, yeah, Proposition S just gets tossed out, but I guess we've got to wait and see how it all plays out in the courts. But I think there's a lot of jurisdictions that are facing this very similar type of issue with these propositions that got approved way back whenever.
Just to get into the weeds a little bit on it now, now that you got me rolling. But the language of Government Code sixty-six-three-hundred, the issue is that any city or local agency cannot enact a law that caps housing, limits, that, a city cannot enact a law that has the effect of, and then it has a bunch of things, imposes a cap, imposes a limit on population, et cetera, et cetera. So to enact something, well, this thing has already been enacted, nineteen ninety-eight. Prop S was enacted in nineteen ninety-eight. So the law, Housing Crisis Act, came to be in two thousand nineteen, or I think, two thousand nineteen, right? So it was already enacted. So what, how does it play with these pre-existing? The, I guess the commenter's interpretation of it is that any sort of application of a pre-existing ordinance is an enactment, essentially. But, you know, that's not a, that's an arguable legal issue that hasn't been decided by any court. So people have their positions. Some, I've seen some city attorneys in some jurisdictions take the position that their pre-existing growth management ordinance is kind of like a non-conforming use, where, yeah, it doesn't conform to the current law, but it was in place before, therefore, it's still, you know, it's valid, it hasn't been repealed by the language. And there's a lot more to get into the weeds with, you know, picking apart the language to see what the intent was and all of that. But, you know, that's my answer, I'm sticking to it.
Okay, any other questions, thoughts?
I have a comment.
Vice Chair Rainey?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, so as someone who litigates all the time, I know that the courts have been backed up because of COVID, and now are slowly opening up. But I even have cases I've been litigating for three years now that I don't even have a set trial date. Do we have, which I know this is a hard question, but do we have any idea when some of these decisions are going to come in to help us?
Looking at that case, it's City of Encinitas v Housing and Community Development. Like I said, there was a final hearing in mid-June, I think June fourteenth, as I recall, and there was no final order yet, just looking at the Register of Actions. But there was some request for briefing, the latest item in the Register of Actions is a request for further briefing to the court. So I don't know if the court's still wrestling with some issues, but, you know, you know how it is. I mean, there's a final hearing, and then there's, if there's a request for further briefing, it's not too much longer where there should be a final order, so I would guess, maybe in the next month or two.
Okay, well, that's promising. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any last thoughts? I have a few comments, actually more just cleaning up some of the paragraphs in here, so I can be happy to provide that to you separately. But I still feel, just from a overall sort of umbrella birds-eye view, is that I still think we're putting too many eggs in one basket with the East Valley specific plan to cover our RENA requirements. So especially given that we won't have an inclusion, we don't at this time, and likely, according to the feasibility study, if I understand correctly, that it's an inclusionary housing ordinance or percentage is not feasible, correct? That's what I read, I think.
For the most part, the sector feasibility study identified the potential, based on the, you know, the point-in-time analysis, that for-sale townhome-type products are potentially feasible with an inclusionary housing project or requirement. Those are about twenty units per acre, but the for-rent units, anything that you're going to get at the densities that would be, that we'd be shooting for out here in the East Valley, those would not pencil, basically.
Right. So I find that troubling, but that is the reality of it at this time. But once again, I guess that's why I do want to emphasize the importance of maintaining those, the TPP and really aiming for that going forward into the future, assuming this East Valley specific plan gets adopted. Commissioner Paul?
Yeah, I would think that, you know, if we have, if it doesn't pencil out in Escondido, it's not going to pencil out in a lot of the other communities. So our, you know, our housing element would be in the same shape as some of our neighbors.
I think I beg to defer on that one, perhaps you guys know, but like, for example, was it Encinitas just has a ten percent set aside? I can't remember, I would have to go back and do some research, but I do think that there are other, there are coastal communities, certainly, I don't know about inland communities, though, that do have the inclusionary ordinance.
But when you talk about arena fitting all in that area, yeah, I was surprised to see how small the area was. I thought it was going to stretch out further, in the corridor, you know, further down, so I was surprised, too. But I do have, I have one other comment then about the mixture of putting lower income in a higher-income neighborhood. The ADUs help that, you know? That's the one positive side to that.
Yeah, the potential is there, but that recent study that was pointed out actually shows differently, but not in San Diego County, but in other counties of California. The ADUs are oftentimes used, are not used for affordable housing, just by a study that was done. All right? Anything else? Okay, so that was informational, we don't need to take a vote on that, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, so Adam, essentially that our next, our next hearing, our next meeting then, we'll actually have a formal hearing on the housing element. Correct me if I'm wrong?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
That's on the housing element, but the East Valley specific plan will come later, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other oral communications?
No, Chair, there are not.
Okay. And Planning Commissioners, any discussion, questions, comments, items for future agendas? Anything at all? Okay, all right, thank you. Directors' report, interim directors' report?
Thank you. So the only thing I was just going to note is what we've got tentatively scheduled for the agenda next, at the next hearing or the next meeting in two weeks. We will, as Chair Barbe stated, we will be formally considering the housing element. We've also got one other public hearing item that's been noticed for a master and precise development plan modification for the Mercedes dealership on Ninth, I think it is there. And there may or may not be another current business item, we're still working on that.
And then I guess we'll be able to report back from the subcommittee on the green in terms of response from City Council?
Correct.
Anything else for the good of the order? All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.